Good evening and welcome to the February tenth, two thousand fourteen, regular meeting of the Waterloo Community School District Board of Education. I hereby call the meeting to order. And now, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Now, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now, I'll read the school district's mission statement. The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community. Now, we have on the agenda the time to listen to any individuals or delegations that would like to address the board. And seeing nobody, feel welcome if you want to, but seeing no one, I won't read the card and we'll just move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a public hearing, and it's the first part of the process in the eventual demolition of Logan Middle School, the old building. This is a public hearing for the asbestos removal. A notice of this public hearing was published in the Waterloo Courier, and there it's six oh three PM, so I hereby declare the public hearing open. This is also on our agenda later on in the, in the meeting. It's Exhibit F on our agenda, and we can talk about it then. If there's, now is the time if anybody wants to address the board regarding the removal of asbestos from Logan to come forward. Okay, seeing none, what we'll do is we'll maybe close the public, move to close the public hearing and then just have the discussion when it's on our item agenda later on in the meeting. So, I would then entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The chair votes aye, motion carried. The public hearing is closed. Again, we'll talk about that later on in our board meeting. But this takes us next to a very good thing. It's a board celebration regarding the donation of a number of books, the African American Book Donation Project, and Jeff Zapotil is here along with Anna Mae Weems. Jeff is a graduate of East High School and has very generously donated books through a project, and Mrs. Weems is coming up as well to, to discuss how this will be put to good use. And now, I'll turn it over to Tara Thomas to give us some background information.
Thank you. We are so honored to have Ms. Anna Mae Weems and Mr. Jeff Zapotil with us this evening. It was inspired in January when myself and some other participants, Marcia Sadler among us, who is a family support worker in the district. The five of us that are listed on this attachment here for this flyer, we were among those attending one of Anna Mae's urban potential seminars, and in doing so, we were inspired by her and encouraged to pay it forward, do something to support the community, and in this case, something that would impact African American students in the district for years to come and beyond, not just that population of students. So, we brainstormed and we came up with an idea to place new African American literature in all the Waterloo Schools libraries, and Marcia had found a Department of Education suggested reading list for twenty fourteen African American literature. So, that coupled with the now generosity of former East High student Jeff Zapotil and now well-known supporter of Waterloo Schools in the community, his five hundred dollar donation tonight is going to see this project through so we can actually purchase those books and then put them in the libraries for generations to benefit from. And I just want to thank Anna Mae for inspiring Marcia, myself, and the other members of the group to do something and not just read a book or go through the motions, but actually take action in the community to give back. So, thank you. And thank you, Jeff. Would you like to say anything? I mean, why would you want to support Waterloo Schools in this way?
Well, having been born and raised in Waterloo, it's, it's an honor and a privilege to give back to the community. It's something I wish more people would do. Sometimes awareness just has to be made to them, so believe me, everybody I know is going to be made more aware, so if you guys need more stuff, let me know. But I know a lot of people, and I really do, and Anna approached me on it, and I said it's, it's a great thing, and, you know, anything I can do for the Waterloo school system and the kids is, is what we're going to do. So, I have the check here to hopefully it'll be put to good use. I know it will be. The books are very well needed, and I just want to thank you for allowing me to participate in this. Thank you very much.
Jeff, in your list of reasons, you omitted the fear of Anna Mae. So, let's just be straight now.
I think everybody already knows that one.
Yeah.
So, we have a certificate only right now, this black and white copy, but the color one was to be printed today. The woman in our office who has it saved on her computer was out, so we are going to get Mr. Zapotil the color copy, and we just thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Jeff.
Appreciate it. Awesome. And the Barnes and Noble, oh, great. He's even giving us a Barnes and Noble discount, so we're going to get a lot more bang for our buck.
Thank you.
Anna Mae, do you want to say something? Come on up here.
Yeah.
Oh, right.
She's alive. Thank you so much. You know, if I was coming down the corridor, I met Mr. Young, Attorney Young, and I said, you know, when Martin Luther King needed some money to come here, his father gave me five hundred dollars. He wasn't even born. Wasn't even born. And I looked on this, on this board, you know, I've been around African American preachers a long time, and they're spontaneous preachers. They'll be saying, preacher, preach on this and this. Today, if I had to preach, I would preach on, in this room, there is some Moses, and that was a Moses, the man, raise your hand right there, right there, raise your hand. He went down, he went down in Florida to get, to get the man. And, so I'm going to come back.
I was in a basket on the river.
So, I'm going to come back. I've asked permission to come back next month to do the honors to him, and I'll do my saying then. Thanks to all of you.
Mrs. Weems, thank you. Thank you for all you've, you've done for the greater community, for the young people and the students here. Jeff, thank you again. I know you've been a big supporter of the schools in East High in particular, so thank you for all you're doing. Great, thanks to all of you. We'll then basically make this official by getting the motion on the table and then we'll vote on it. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education accepts and acknowledges a gift in the amount of five hundred dollars from Jeff Zapotil for the Waterloo Schools libraries. Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Okay, in discussion? Just again, you have our thanks and our gratitude. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And motion carried.
If I may add one thing, we just had one of our group members show up here, so I wanted to recognize Ricky McCollum. He is new to the area with Cedar Falls Utilities relocating from out east, and it was really fun to get to know him because he said that when he moved here, his son came to visit and couldn't understand how he knew so many people when in fact it was just Iowa folks being friendly on the bike trail. So, thank you, Ricky, for coming and for the support also of Cedar Falls Utilities in this project to continue Anna Mae's mission through urban potential.
Yes. Ricky, thank you as well, and please give our thanks back at CFU, and thank you for being here, so we appreciate it.
Did Tara use, Ricky, did Tara use that story that she used to be a news anchor with you?
I had no idea who I was.
I sat down with her for a few minutes, and she asked me a thousand questions.
Thanks again to all of you. We'll now move on to the consent agenda, which tonight consists of four items. There's minutes of our last regular school board meeting, personnel and appointments, personnel adjustment, appointments and adjustments, excuse me, since our last board meeting, bills due and payable since our last board meeting, and then lastly, the Logan Middle School asbestos removal. Are there any items that board members wish to be removed?
Item F, foxtrot, please.
Thank you. And that's the Logan Middle School asbestos removal. And then, I'll ask that Exhibit E, bills due and payable be removed because I'll abstain on that one. Any other? We're just down to two, so, two items left. All right, hearing no other, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exceptions of Items E and F.
So moved.
Thank you. And all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oh, I'm sorry, second.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to Exhibit E on page twelve, bills due and payable between board meetings. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the bills due and payable and the bills paid between board meetings. Get that motion on the table, please.
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Okay, and just before discussion, I'll abstain from voting on this matter because as an attorney, representing a client is paid by one of the bills. With that, any further discussion or questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Chair abstains. Motion carried. That takes us then to the Logan Middle School asbestos removal. Exhibit F on page twenty.
I move the Board of Education approve the Logan Middle School asbestos removal project and publish a notice to bidders.
Thank you. A second? Okay. In discussion?
I guess I just wanted to encourage that we cross it, cast as broad a net as possible. This is my least favorite type of contract that we issue. Seems like we get sold a little for so much money, and I'll stop short of calling the whole process a scam, and that's not against the contractors, but the whole regu, anyway. But, there's not very many bidders, and so, to the extent we can, you know, establish timelines that are favorable for contractors and any other thing we can do to minimize this, this cost, maybe go out for a little wider range of bidders. I know there's not a, a lot of them, but anyway, just make an extraordinary effort to, to get out of this with as little a pain as we can.
And I just want to say, I think this goes to us being good stewards and making sure that we're keeping to our promise of not leaving our buildings sit empty, and this is the first of many processes, and unfortunately, I'm just like Eli, I don't like to pay for it any more than the next person, but we can't demolish until we get the asbestos out.
Yeah, and I'm not.
And I know you're not. I'm just, I'm happy that we're moving the process along and that we are keeping our promises to the community that we are going to take those buildings down, so.
Are there any other asbestos removals that we need, like, right now, that we could piggyback them together?
That's a good question. Old Irving has gone out.
Oh, that's already gone.
And actually, this might be a good idea, Dr. Norris, can you just talk about the process of, yeah?
Well, the board has certainly made it a priority of the demolition of the buildings, and in addition to that, several years ago, you tasked us with downsizing some of our extra property that we had, and we've done that. We've tried to be good stewards. We've even donated some of the land that the city eventually is using for new home development, so I, I think we should feel good about that. Asbestos out of Irving and Logan, the demo at Irving will begin this spring as soon as we possibly can. We haven't sought bids yet, but, and then on to Logan, yet in two thousand fourteen, so I'm hoping this summer, fall to be, to be done there. Irving will likely be purchased, I'm guessing, for development if we can get some.
Or the bare ground.
The bare ground.
Yeah, old Irving, yeah.
Right now, none of our building laden ground was attractive to developers because of the reasons Lyle has just stated and, and the rest of you. Logan will likely remain, remain as a green space, and I said Irving will likely be developed. After that, Orange and Edison are next likely, the following year, and the city has made a request because of development that we might consider doing Orange before Edison, just in terms of priorities. We had them both down to do at some point. We had, we've yet to go through the steps at Orange yet, but back to, back to Sue's question, that, that would be, well, should we start at, could we get any possible favorable bid by doing Logan and Orange or Logan and, and we can check on that. My notion is because Logan is such a big building that we're probably getting some type of value just for the huge size of the building. But, yeah, we'll check on that, and we'll also cast the wider net.
Because if, do the crews typically, the bidders, the contractors, come from out of town?
We have two that have been, I can't remember, I can't state their names right up, but I know Marty's told me we generally only have two that bid on it.
Yeah, and I don't know that the, it might be like Cedar Rapids.
Yeah, there's like Dumeck's Cedar Rapids.
Regional companies.
Eastern Iowa, but. If there's crews here, then maybe, you know, the mileage.
Yeah, maybe. And has the, has the city done enough yet?
I don't know if they've done asbestos. I believe they have, but not demoed it yet. I believe that.
We could, we could check to, that might be.
The county would have any buildings that we could piggyback with, you know, I don't know if the Landry.
Yeah, I don't know. You know, I agree that there's probably not a lot of economy and scale, but you never know unless you check, so.
Be happy to check.
And now, to back up, but very simple thing, all the, and I'm sorry, the reason you do this is because you can't put asbestos in the landfill, is that correct? Okay, so it's the building debris.
You can put it in the landfill, but it's got to be in a separate section of the landfill, and got to be in certain kind of hazmat bags.
Gotcha, so that's why, the process is to remove the asbestos, then the building can be essentially knocked down and then cleared.
And we don't want to get caught like we did at Lincoln, whereas it got mixed.
And then all the.
And then everything had to go into the asbestos portion of the landfill, so.
Paid a huge cost.
That was.
I just, I just had a, a little follow-up question, and maybe this isn't the place to ask the question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. So, the, you just said the removal will be in the summer, is what you're looking at, summer for, for Irving and then, and then followed up with Logan?
That's, that's our hope.
But it won't go into the school year like the, you know, the sixty-three and getting kids across that and then having construction again, and the next new school year would be just.
But what, what they'll actually do is they'll put a fence just around that area. We built the new, we, we built the new Irving, excuse me, we built the new Kitterell and then they put a fence around it and tore down the old Kitterell right next to it. We had to build the new first. So, I think we can pretty well keep it out of the way of, of kids. And what they generally do is they, they work at a certain part of the building and then move one direction so we can ask them to move away from, if, if it goes that way.
Yeah, we want to make sure we maintain access from that North Street, whatever that is.
Right.
Louise.
That's a good, good point, because we don't know how congested that, the main entrance is going to be at that point.
Yeah, whatever we do, Ms. Weekly, Ms. Weekly, we'll have to make sure we keep it totally away from young people, so there's no possible way they can.
And do we own that little building that the contractors used?
They're, they're demoing it.
Is that the gas station, the former gas station?
So, the asbestos has gone from there?
I believe so. They're, they were.
Oh, they're, they're demoing it for us.
They're moving everything.
And I think that was in, as part of the, the trade with them using the building for kind of lay down area. Okay.
But I do think the contractors are very conscientious, because my kids were at Kitterell when they did that, and we were this far apart from the building, and it was no problem at all.
It's, and just backing up on kind of the whole process, because when you look at it, a lot of this is, it was talked about, I think, even with the one cent sales tax when that went in or when it was renewed, about building new buildings, and generally, you'd like to put it all into building new buildings, but there was also, there was commitment made at that time to use some of the money to take down the old buildings that didn't have any use, and throughout, I think, each building, especially over the last decade or so, or really since the one cent sales tax went in, we've tried, the school district has tried to find alternative uses for the building so they don't have to be torn down. However, we just haven't found one. Logan was on the market, really literally for, oh, a couple of years, I believe. It's been, the school's been out for four years.
People know that to retrofit an older building, they have to totally bring it up to code, and that all of a sudden then engages new plumbing, new heating, new fire systems, new air, and it really is more expensive than building new.
Just one more comment, and I don't know if it's our normal process to try to identify the extent of asbestos before we bid it, but.
We do.
All right, so we test the glazing and the flashing and the floor tile, okay.
Ceiling tile and floor tile. Okay, any further questions or discussion? Thank you, Dr. Norris. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That concludes the action items on our agenda, so next is the superintendent's report. Dr. Norris.
And I think you told me I could have until seven.
Yes, we got to stretch it out.
Okay. Right, right, Mrs. Flum?
We always need you working your hours tonight.
Oh, make sure I work them, just not set up. Well, a couple of, couple of things. Last, a week and a half ago, we made a high school task force presentation to John Deere execs and other area business CEOs, and basically, Steve Dust was there, Linda Allen, President of Hawkeye, and essentially, we went over some, some of the ground we've covered out at the community meetings, but it was really good to get the CEOs in a room and start discussing what particular job skills they felt like our students, our workers in the area were, were, were missing, and we're going to continue those discussions. Also, we had, Mike and I attended the IB Leadership Breakfast, and we think that that process was going well. We should hear for sure by March, whether we've been authorized or not, but it was, it was a great meeting, we had a great exchange. Also, let me just say, it's really good that we can get back to normal around here. We talked last time about the work that it took for the TLC grant. Jane gave a little report on it last time, but it, it is, something that monumental really drains the attention and the, the resources of the district for that short period of time, so we've been really focused on that. We think we have a good grant and have as good a chance as, as anybody to get it. And then, let me, let me say, let me ask you all a question regarding the weather. Right now, because we've missed four complete days of school, we will end the school year on Friday, June sixth, with kids, students, and teachers will report on Saturday, June seventh, by contract, they have it in their contract, that we must allow them an opportunity. Some don't, and they come back on Monday. But anyway, quite a number came on Saturday. So, my question to you is this, we're not out of the winter yet, and is that how that expression goes, we're not out of the winter yet?
This, it applies, this winter regardless, yeah.
You can mix metaphors.
We have, we've looked at several options. We, we first looked because one of our board members was approached by a teacher. We looked at TQ Day about switching out school in lieu of professional development, and it turned out we, we were far too committed on speakers and other things that we could back out of that, it was going to cost quite a bit of money. We also have thought about conference days. There's just a bunch of complicating reasons why it's probably not good to do that, that this year. I'm, I'm going to address a plan for next year in just a minute, but I want to say, what are your thoughts about Good Friday? If we, if we have another day that takes the kids then into Monday, that would be June, what, ninth, would it be better to have them come to school? This is, we could make an announcement and tell parents to be expecting, you know, we'll know well in advance of that date, obviously, that's in the middle of April. So, be, be thinking about that. I'm not asking for a vote or a decision tonight. The other thing I think we're going to do though for next calendar, and I want you to hold us accountable for this, but I think next calendar, we ought to designate ahead of time some days that if we have a hard winter can be used for snow days. They're, they're built in, in a sort in that we could access them if we needed them. So, I'm not proposing that we build in more than a hundred and eighty days, but of the days that are built in, or when, excuse me, let me say it differently, of the breaks that are built in, which of those breaks might be fodder for, for, you see what I mean? So, we might say by so-and-so, if we've had certain amount of thing, no TQ Day, or no Good Friday, or no, we won't do conferences quite like we did, and there, there's a worry by some that people have already made plans. Well, I said, well, that's kind of fascinating because we're able to cancel school on a moment's notice, but are you saying we can't un-cancel school and, and have people go back?
People made plans in June, too, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true. It cuts both ways.
So, I, I just, I'm not asking again for a vote tonight, but I'd love to know what you think. Is Good Friday, has that been, has there been an issue with Good Friday in, in the community? I know a lot of church services have, or a lot of churches have services, but my notion was most of them were in the evening. I don't know that for a fact.
How does that affect the teachers' union and their contract?
I think in any case, what we do is we get a collaborative agreement to go ahead. So, it isn't that we would just mandate it, we would sit with them at the table and say, hey, what do you all think about, instead of having your, that would put teachers then to the tent.
During negotiations for a following year, those, those things can come up too, and that way, everybody's on board with it.
Absolutely.
My question to that would be that, would there be an allowance for a student that a parent did have plans to go out of town already for, let's say, Good Friday? You know, they're going to Grandma's in Texas for the three-day weekend or something, so that, that it could be, you know, in those cases, a parental request and excused absence or, you know, something.
Don't, don't parents have that right, right now? I think.
Right, they do, but it, I, I'm a little confused on that, to get it, it excused.
But there are numerous, like.
But a parent can, can excuse an absence, at least it's not the same then as a, a zero or a skip day.
Right, right. Yeah, if you're tired, yeah, but anyway, but the, the thing with that is for the classroom teacher to not hold them for their work is what I'm talking about, you know, that there would be, if we're adding a day that wasn't a stipulated day, that the teacher would accommodate the work required for that day if they already had previous plans, you know?
You wouldn't necessarily schedule an exam on that day.
Right, exactly. That's what I, kind of.
But there are numerous church services between twelve and three. We could also consider Saturdays, I suppose.
What do other UEN districts do?
Well, they're all over the map, and, and some of our rural counterparts are the same. Some people, they give up a couple of days of spring break, is a very popular one. That would be, that would not be possible without negotiation, because right now.
Right.
Our contract calls for a, a fi, a full week spring break, but that's one. Others could be.
School on Saturday, half day.
Some go Martin Luther King Day, some go, just, just different things.
I, my first reaction was, I think it's great to look into it and talk about it, and Good Friday of all the days probably on the calendar, I hadn't thought about it before you said anything, but that's probably the most logical, I think, that you'd look at. Yeah, and maybe the only one left, but I do, I think general, generally, there's probably less traveling on Good Friday than like Thanksgiving, you know, that Thursday or Friday, or certainly Christmas break, so.
Dr. Norris, where are we in the schedule for next year? Is that?
On the calendar.
Yeah, on the calendar, are we in the process of that?
We are absolutely, the committee has been meeting, and they'll, you know, I would say in March, they'll have a recommendation to you.
But we're going to have a hour versus days.
That's the other question.
Workshop before that, aren't we?
Well, you, it's actually kind of two separate things, although they're somewhat tied together. The hours versus day thing has to be reported to the state now, a new date by April fifteen. The calendar is up to you whenever you approve it.
But you can't do a calendar before you know that. It has such a tremendous. It has such a tremendous impact on the calendar that logically you need to make that call before.
I would think you ought, I would think you ought to have a doggone, doggone good idea. I mean, the, the whole calendar is predicated, and, and so is ten eighty hours, predicated upon six hours a day, a hundred and eighty days. So even if you go to hours, you're still trying to hit the mark of a hundred and eighty days.
And adding one, one day would get six hours right away. It'd take a lot of readjustments, you know, fifteen-minute readjustments, twenty-four days.
But the answer is, yes, we plan on talking about all of those things in March.
Usually we publish the calendar. Later part of January.
It's gotten later and later the last few years.
I think the last draft took, it was like sixteen drafts or something like that.
And along those lines, what, what is the feeling that, you know, we bumped school back a week later in August? What has been the general overall feeling of that, which we did this year?
Well, the calendar committee is bringing a recommendation to you to go back to something closer to what they had before. And, and I have not been privy to that discussion, so they'll present it to you, but.
And that's the push and pull of.
Right, and because I had had comments about people had liked the semester to end before the break. And so that was a lot of comments I got, which a lot of the educators were pushing that, but there's another side that.
It's most like high school.
Yeah.
Because kids, K through eight, really, the semester is not a year to them.
And it's, I think on the other side, those that, at the state level with the state fair, and I, I think also the tourism industry, look at it more from the high school level with, with employees, summer employees.
But then now they can't start working till June ninth.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, so flip it either way.
There's no squeezing the balloon, yeah.
With the calendar committee, I don't know when they're gonna issue a report, but unless we make that call beforehand, they need to develop two calendars. As a matter of fact, that would be helpful in, in, in us, in, in our decision to know, well, if we do it this way, if we do the hourly thing, this is what the, we could do with the calendar. If we look at the days, this is what we could do, so I know it doubles our work, but it's probably worth it.
And that's it. It looks like the calendar was brought, this current calendar was brought, it was at the last, the second meeting of February last year. It'd be our next, next meeting. Cunningham was two weeks later. Well, Dr. Norris, thank you very much. And now information from board members. I'll, I'll start with Shanley McNally.
I'll start, because I'm excited. Woo! Okay, so first of all, I know that we have ten thousand kids, but I get three in my house that sometimes rank just a little bit more on my enthusiasm scale. So I want to congratulate the Hoover Band, Ken Henze and Amy Feldman for, they were offered one of two eighth-grade bands in the state to attend the Iowa Bandmasters Conference in Des Moines in May and perform. So if you see those guys, tell them congratulations, because it was a huge deal. They had to record this awesome music, get their band ready and submit it, and I think it's a great honor for them. And then secondly, as a proud swim mom, I want to congratulate both East High and West High. East High had a Tyler Camp placed third, I think, in the two hundred IM and made it to state. And we, West High had seven, made it in seven events and had six young men qualify on Saturday, so it was a really awesome day for the West High men's swim team, so, yay.
Yes.
Okay, I'll stop.
Great, and that was Saturday.
That was Saturday, at Holmes, actually, but.
Including Jackson.
So, I was excited for them. Those are my kudos.
Great, it's good to hear. Great, thank you, Shanley. And Sue Flynn?
Well, first of all, Mary Meyer is not here tonight, but I just want to thank her for her service and her work with the academies and, and I'm sure we will have an opportunity to do that again, but just that, not to overlook that she was, her retirement was on the agenda tonight. And I was gonna pull it, but she wasn't here, so I may as well not speak to the Andrew and Tara about it, but anyway. So I wanted to mention that. And then also on Saturday, the state speech contest was held at West High. And I live right across the street, and there was probably a, a line of traffic all day long, and they estimated eight to ten thousand people that we accommodated at West High, so.
Was it like a speakeasy? Never.
Don't laugh at him.
Yeah, don't laugh. But anyway, awesome job by the speech and drama department at West High. Those teachers put a lot of hard hours, and the custodial staff, that place looked spotless, and it was. And then lastly, I wondered, when do we expect to hear about the TLC grant? Do we have any?
Mid-March.
Mid-March, okay, super.
That's pretty quick.
Yeah, that's great. So we can just keep our fingers crossed there? That's all I have?
Great, thank you, Sue. Angela Weekly?
And just as a, a new board member, I have been trying to get around to the schools as much as I can, and have had the opportunity twice this year to participate in a math night. One at Cunningham and just this last week at Lou Henry. And it's just amazing to see how families and see how excited the kids are about math, so just, you know, a shout-out to our math teachers for encouraging and, and bringing that excitement to, to our kids, and just, it was just amazing. And it was, there was diversity in everyone. There were male, there were female. It was just, it was just great to see that everyone was kind of excited about the math. Although both of them could have had better turnouts, parents who decided not to come out in the cold.
But the kids, I know that, I've seen it once before, and the kids were really excited, yeah. Thank you, Angela.
You can't talk about flashcards. Not tonight.
And next, well, I'll start with Andrea Sparks.
Well, let's see, I was gone for a week, hoping the weather would improve, but I'm glad we didn't have any more days of no school while I was gone, so. So maybe now things will look up, so that's all I have tonight.
Fingers crossed, yeah. Thank you, Andrea. And Mike Kinsey?
Nothing to discuss tonight, just that, hopefully all get a warm night's sleep, and hopefully the weather is supposed to warm up here later this week, and we can all get back to some normal winter conditions.
We hope, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks for adding to my list. There are a lot of electronic flashcard programs out there, and I expect them to be front and center in our math thing. And two other comments. One is, you know, I don't know if it's just an awareness thing, but the, the general public recognition, I think, of the need for skills, certified skills, some sort of certification, just seems to be growing out there. So it's, it sort of underscores in one sense, I think, the direction of the twentieth century task force. At the same time, probably puts some additional urgency on it, so we just need to keep moving, but it, it's kind of, I think, verifies that we're, we're on the right track on that one. And then lastly, there was the, on Friday, Department of Education, Transportation people came up to evaluate the, the upgrade of the technology on the buses. And we don't know yet what the results will be within a couple of weeks. We'll know. They had some concerns and some legitimate ones, and we've kind of addressed those, so we're working with, with the Department of Education and, and, because everybody wants the same, you know, they want them to be safe and yet enhanced capabilities, so.
What was the pilot, the two schools, just the two schools?
Well, there's two for the Camelot system and two for Zoner. So Carver, Lou Henry are the Zoner schools. Orange and Bunker are the Camelot schools.
And one more thing, piggybacking on that, Gary, if you would just, I had a couple of parents say, well, it was really cold this morning, how come the buses didn't have a problem? And I said, oh, because we made a little bit of difference in the gas going into the buses, so.
Do you want the short X one?
The short, the short.
Well, we, you know, we have more aggressively mixed our fuel mixture, and, you know, probably be fine this year having seventy percent of grade number one and thirty percent of grade number two. In warmer temperatures, you can get by with grade number two. So we've also, I sent out a, a request, as you know, Sue, several, almost a month ago now, and got quite a bit of information back of what other Iowa school districts do. So we have quite a list, but we got, we also were recommended different, add to the fuel tank products, so we're, we're in pretty good shape now.
And they worked pretty well this morning?
They did. Supposed to be seventeen below tomorrow morning, so we'll see. We're knocking on the door.
And, and hopefully this kind of sets a precedent. I mean, normally, normally, we, you know, the sixty-forty mixture, or whatever it was, or fifty-fifty. You know, from a, from a bus, from an engine standpoint, you want to burn as much number two as you possibly can. I understand that we fill about every week to ten days, so we probably need to look at the forecast, and actually, if we can, change that.
Go back to fifty, go back to fifty.
Change that mixture based on the seven-day forecast.
If we took the safe way out the entire time, it would be so cost prohibitive, we couldn't run.
Well, plus it's not good for the engines to run, to run that.
Not, I don't mean kid's safety, I mean, if we took the, well, it won't gel route out, because kid's safety is our number one thing.
I think Marty said the emergency vehicles in town run an eighty-twenty.
Right.
So that's kind of the one extreme. But the, the snowplows and stuff stay at sixty-forty, so we're trying to.
Somewhere in there.
They wipe the plows out, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's not as, my, the criticality, and we're in between, because, you know, snowplow going down is one thing, but busload of kids is.
One, one thing that was interesting to find out from many of the smaller districts, a few buy their gas, or diesel as it is, from the local co-op in, in the community. Many buy from the local convenience store where they're already mixing a, a pre-mix, and so they go right up to the, I'm not gonna mention any brand names, but we all know what convenience stores are out there. They go right up, and they know that at Diesel at that pump, it's gonna be a mixture of some type, and they use, I was, I was surprised. So they just get her right off the shelf.
But that's easier when you have two or three buses.
It's very.
Close to eighty, yeah.
Eighty-five pulling up at a quick shop with eighty-five buses. Draining their, I did want to mention another thing. I, I attended an incredible musical. Julie and I did the other night at East High, Music Man. They did their, I think it's the first musical either ever or in a long time, but it was well-done. It, it's always very trying for musical directors and theater people to, to try to do musicals. There's just so much involved, costumes and lights and scenery, and, and then dialogue and singing and all of those things, but they did a miraculous job. And it was a top-notch production. They used a, they used a tracks-like accompaniment, just a professional tracks that you can order with all of it. So they sounded like they were singing over top of a regular orchestra, and it was, and the sound was, you could hear the singers, and so two things I thought of, all the work of all the people. And then the, the board, what you've done with the auditoriums, and we have decent sound systems and decent lighting system. So the kids get a genuine feel of what it's like to, to, to do a theatrical production, so good, kudos to East High for that great production.
Yes, very good point. Thank you. And with that, our next board meeting is in two weeks. It's on Monday, February twenty-fourth at six P.M. And if there's nothing, nothing further, entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, yes, Dr. Barney?
No.
Hey, I just want to note that tomorrow night at East High School is the East-West, it'll be the final one for the year, East-West game, starting at six o'clock for the girls' game, and then the boys' game to follow. So folks, get out and support the kids, that'd be great.
Very good point, okay. Thank you, Dr. Barney. Okay, and with that, if there's nothing further, all those in favor of the motion to adjourn, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Chair votes aye, motion carried, adjourned. Thank you all.